He's not going to be like.
You're going to be international crime.
Too, man to man, don't go zero guys.
Whenever you're ready.
Oh, it is, I apologize. The, you will come to order, please.
I've got it pulled up. Yeah, and once you get up there, yep, I'll get it over here.
So at least, are you having the whole thing here or what?
Um, yeah, I've got the packet, so I'm ready when you are.
We need the roll call.
Okay.
Oh, Peggy's.
Oh, I'm sorry Peggy, I'm sorry, I did see you over there Peggy, I apologize, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, so we've got Smith Beck absent, Nelson.
Yay.
Pulled up.
Here.
Malzon.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Dan Campton.
Here.
Bino.
Here.
And Schnelly.
Here, thank you. Move on to approval of minutes. There's a note here on the agenda, it's listed as June 4th, it is in fact June 5th, correct? So we need a motion to approve the minutes of the plant commission meeting of June 5th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item 4A, which is public appearances, community input. Uh, I'm gonna read this. This part of the agenda allows members of the community or the public to provide information to the plant commission, including items both on and off the agenda. This agenda item allows the commission to receive information and to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Commission members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information each, or such as whether the, the information should be directed to staff or placed on a future commission agenda. However, commission members may not expand their discussion beyond each procedural matter. Anybody want to discuss anything that's off the agenda or on the agenda? Otherwise, it'll be time to do it while we have the agenda item. Thank you. Okay, moving on. No unfinished business. Item 7A for discussion only, updated conceptual site plan presentation for MSP Real Estate Incorporated, South Main Street, affordable senior housing, or affordable senior apartment development, I'm sorry, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, we've prepared a little presentation, I know you've gotten a package of information that includes updated site plan and architectural renderings, but if, we've also prepared some, a PowerPoint to make, to streamline some of the information.
Brian, could you just pull that microphone a little closer to you?
Sure. So I wanted just to review, I know it's been a while since we were in front of this committee, I think we were last here in January, but we, um, this was the timeline actually that we put together almost a year ago, and thanks to, um, our flexible sellers, and to staff, and to, um, the commitment of the community, we've made a lot of progress. In, um, Janu- excuse me, in, in December, we submitted for WEDA application, which is a big source of funding for affordable housing in this project, and in May, we were awarded those funds, and so the project is on track, um, from a financial perspective. Yesterday, we submitted our TIF application, and just a few weeks before that, we were here in front of the village board to make our pre-application requests, so we're tracking there as well. Tonight, we're gonna talk about updates to, um, the site plan based on feedback that we received from this committee, from the village board, and from a meeting that we hosted with the neighborhood, and so we're gonna review the comments that we took from all those groups and how we've applied them to our plan set. And going forward, we're, um, gonna be seeking funding from Dane County, those, the applications are out now, we'll make that submittal in August, and so the hope is that with the feedback that we get tonight, we'll come back in August to ask for approval of our plans and wrap up financing towards the end of the year, so we can begin construction in January. So I just wanted to, uh, just kind of remind the planning commission of that timeline that we're on and, uh, kind of where we're at so far. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'll just, uh, again, re- remind or re-familiarize the committee with the site itself, these are just a couple pictures of the site, um, taken from overhead, it is bisected by Elm Street to the, uh, east, and we're right along South Main Street there, you can see some of the reference photos. The project is made up of fifty-seven, uh, total units, twenty-six of which are one bedrooms, and thirty-one are two bedrooms, we have, it says twenty surface stalls, um, I think we have eighteen or twenty surface stalls, uh, a number of covered stalls which are below grade, uh, for a total of sixty-eight, uh, parking spaces. Uh, here's a, just a, I guess a, a look at your existing, uh, site zoning, um, we have received, uh, zoning approval by this committee, so this is in place already. And now I wanted just to, before we talk about the changes to the plan, I wanted just to summarize some of the feedback that we got from this group and from the community, and I'll, and I'll, this might take a second, but I think it's important because this does impact a lot of the changes that we made. Um, number one, buffering and privacy, neighbors wanted a stronger buffer, uh, berm and evergreen trees, uh, were mentioned, we'll talk about that. Historic compatibility, obviously we're only a block away from your historic downtown, and so there was a real, and then we've heard this a number of times, I think that the, like, there was a consensus among all the different groups that we talked about, that this building should represent and should take cues from the downtown, both architecturally, colors, brick materials, all the things, and so we, you'll see that in our, uh, presentation. Uh, design suggestions included adding porches along Main Street, I think our first rendering didn't have a connection to the Main Street, and so there was, I think this commu- this, uh, a group actually suggested that we pulled the building closer to the street, so that there was this real pedestrian feel that, um, extended along this portion of Main Street. Height and scale, consider breaking up the massing along Main Street and reducing the frontage on Main Street, we, we have done that, we've actually reduced the, the total amount of linear feet on Main Street, and we'll, we'll show you how that was done. The driveway concerns, um, there was a comment that was made that the total amount of asphalt on the site was too much, um, and part of that was the orientation and the drive into the, the underground parking ramp, so we've, we've changed that, we'll talk about that. Parking generally, there was consensus that we had enough parking on the site, and that's, uh, already been approved. Traffic impact, we conducted a traffic study, and we have the results of that, and we'll go through that at the end of the presentation. Affordability, clarity, I, I think there was some questions about, uh, levels of affordability, who would qualify, what the rents would be, and so we've got much more information in our presentation tonight for that. And then the community room at the corner, um, with the wraparound, I think there was some questions about, you know, where it should be facing and whether it should be in such a prominent location, and so we'll talk about that as well. So, um, what you'll see on the, on the left side is the, the, the plan that we reviewed, uh, in January, and you'll see the big, the big change here is that we've basically flipped the building, and there's a number of reasons, and we'll go through that, but one of the things that this does is it brings the entrance, um, into and out of the building along the one-way portion of Main Street, so on this portion of Main Street, it's a one-way going south out of your downtown until you hit Elm Street, and then it becomes a two-way. And one of the reasons that we liked the orientation on the right side is because this really forces all of the traffic through your downtown and through Main Street. Um, some of the community members were concerned that this project would draw a lot of traffic through Elm Street or in different areas, and that's not the case if you, you know, put it on the one-way. You'll also notice, and we talked about this just in the last slide, that we've bisected the building for the entrance to the underground parking, instead of bringing it all the way around the back of the building, which reduces the total amount of, um, asphalt on the site by bringing it in on the si- yeah, on the side versus at, uh, the end there. And then the other thing that you'll notice here is that both the, on the first plan, both wings were, I would say, equidistant, they were, they were, uh, the same length from the corridor, on the, one on the right, we've shortened the, uh, the Main Street side and lengthened the, the section that goes back into the property, um, so that we were able to accommodate larger, um, more gracious spacing between both property lines to accommodate some of the setbacks and the concerns that we heard, uh, through the community and through this group here. What am I missing?
Yeah, I think we can look at the slightly larger one on the next slide. So as Brian was mentioning, we did kind of do some internal pushing and pulling to kind of shorten that, increasing the setbacks. You know, kind of the big flip of the building, so we now have it running along the, um, more towards the south, allowed our driveway to be on the north, the entrance from Elm, or, on the one-way north of Elm Street. This was kind of a win-win as well, because the grading of the site, kind of the high point is roughly in the middle of the building on the, the east-west length, or, uh, wing of the building, yep, right about where the dot is. But generally, the, the city sidewalk slopes, um, down towards downtown, what this allows us to do is create a little bit better balance of cut and fill on the site, it also allows us to create kind of a public entrance that has an accessible route to it, so the dark area, if you move that dot down to the south, and then that walkway towards, nope, but, that one right there, it allows kind of this pedestrian access to the building, kind of a, a, a front door, if you will, adjacent to our community room space within the building. It allows us to kind of have these two pedestrian and then parking access points kind of come to the same point in the building, so that we kind of have that space within the building, so it's kind of a nice, um, foyer to the building, if you will, from no matter which direction you're coming from, but creating that accessible route was kind of an important thing. We do have the, um, porch access, as we move north, those will have steps in them because of the grade of, of the property. But we figured it was much more important to have that accessible route to the public entrance of the building, and then, um, the other thing, we now have this overlaid over in an actual survey, before we were kind of working off of, um, Dane County GIS mapping and such, so there was a little plus or minus with that, both in the grades as well as the property. But by running parallel to Main Street allows us, our setback to kind of increase in the south as we, as the, the wing goes back, so that we can have that gracious yard space that still is maintained to the neighbor to the south. We've kept the stormwater in the northwest corner of the site, and what we're looking at now, we've had preliminary discussions with city engineering and our civil engineer, and when we come back, we'll have all that information detailed out, but generally speaking, we'll probably be running a, um, storm line, underground storm line to the pond. And so controlling all the water in that corner, it allows us to be a little further away from the, um, building as well, which is not a bad thing. We have those crazy big rains that happen more often than they used to. And then, we're, we're also indicating on this drawing that we're looking at doing solar, so the south-facing roof would have solar. For the, the KW that we're after, we do have some ground mount noted as well, we weren't able to accommodate it all on the south-facing route, so we were putting that to the west of the drive down into the parking as well. And trying to preserve some large trees along the, um, railroad, um, right-of-way line on the west side of the site as well. And I think that's kind of everything on that. So again, the, the plans of the building, um, we're still working out the details of the actual individual unit apartments, we're starting to show the balconies and, and patios. Every unit does have a balcony or a patio, um, associated with it. And then we'll have accessible parking elevator service to the basement level, so covered parking for the seniors, which is always, no matter what your age in Wisconsin, it's great to have that as a, um, a, a feature of the building as well. And, uh, then, we just kind of put this in, kind of some of the inspiration that's been talked about for the building, kind of the, the colors and, um, uh, and some of the historic buildings downtown, some similar project images of ways to, um, break up the massing, different use of materials, and then some of the neighboring properties as well, as kind of some of the context that we're dealing with, with the elevations. And the last time we were here, we, we were just working off of a site plan and floor plan, so now we've started to develop that in the next page, and we have the actual materials because colors are always off digitally, um, they actually look mu- much closer there than our printed copies, but kind of a, a mixture of brick masonry, and then a, a variety of colors, as well as, um, installation of a cement fiber cement, um, cement fiber siding that we'll be using in, in some lap siding, some panel siding, some, um, board and baton, just to kind of break up those textures, so we'd have color as well as, um, uh, the, the textural differences on the, the siding as well. And then we start to get into some of the images, when we come back, we'll have renderings with landscape and people and kind of the entourage with it, but right now we're off of some preliminary sketch-up models here, but it's starting to show the massing that we've got with the, the balconies that are partially inset into the building, some, some columns creating that kind of porch look, trying to keep the massing of the building down as opposed to saying we're a tall building, where, so we're, we're trying to break up the lines to kind of, um, keep that human scale from the, um, the, the pedestrian aspect, and while not exactly correct, we kind of starting to see some of the slope on the site here with, you know, some of the stairs up as well. So what we'd be looking at again is a combination of the sidings, the kind of tan areas, uh, wrapping the first and second floor windows would be the brick, which we're looking at kind of a cream city-ish type of brick, but also something that isn't, um, a, s- it, it's got a little bit of a tumble feel to it, that it's not, um, uh, a crisp, large-sized brick that you might find in a commercial building, but something that's a little bit more residential scale as well. And then using inset panels, um, William window muttons and mullions to kind of break up that scale, uh, as well as the balcony railings, as well as then, then some gable features on the building to kind of break up the roof line as well. The, the building would have, um, a in-floor heating system, so that, which works really well and pretty much, I can't think of any senior buildings that we have done with MSP that haven't had that as a feature, it's efficient, it's comfortable, and, um, it's actually relatively cost-effective as well, so it's kind of a win-win-win from that standpoint. Air conditioning, we would have some, a, a handful of condensers that would either be on the backside or possibly even in the basement for the common areas, and then we'd be looking at kind of through-wall air conditioning, it's something that's not used as much in these buildings. So I think Marina has those, but as we go through the elevations, they, we've tried to blend them in with, and, um, you know, they'd be matching the colors of the siding and such as well. Pardon me, this is the community room side, so we do have kind of a wraparound roof-covered porch patio area. This would be on the southeast side of the building, um, as well, and again, just kind of a slightly different angle from the previous one, showing, you can see some of the vertical lines for the board and baton, and the, the different textures of the siding materials on there. Uh, this is on the parking lot side, the entrance from the parking area as well, so we'd have a small covered entry on that side, blazing, kind of allowing people into that common area. Where are we here? Oh, okay, this is the, the south property line, kind of from the south, uh, west corner. And then the, the bottom elevation here, we, we had this labeled in your packet of the different, um, facade materials and such, and then this is just kind of showing the context of the property lines and the two, uh, neighboring, um, uh, properties as well. And you can kind of see that slope of the sidewalk as we move from left to right or from south to north.
Did you want to stay on that slide, or?
I think let's stay, maybe we could just pause there and ask the, um, planning commission if they have comments there before we go, and the last couple slides is, uh, more, um, information about, uh, the traffic study and affordability, unless you'd like us to cover that and come back to, but I felt like this might be the bulk of the comments.
Um, are we gonna have public comments at all?
I know there's a couple folks that had some questions, maybe wanted to just hear the presentation.
Typically, we don't, but it's, I have a problem with that. Let's, let's go through your presentation.
Finish the presentation.
And then, if, if some folks want to make a comment.
Okay.
Then at least you're here, you can respond to it, okay? I'm expecting to make some.
No, I, I got a couple.
I'd be surprised if you don't.
Yeah, I'd prefer to wait and hear some public.
Okay, fine. Same with you.
No, let's go ahead, let's finish it up and let's.
Okay.
Do this in series.
Yep, okay. Um, so this is in response to, I, there was a number of questions about, like, how affordable would this be, and so, um, the first tables show the breakdown of the units themselves, the number of units, um, that we're providing, and then the table to the right of the dot, uh, just breaks down, you know, the level of affordability, when it says AMI, that's, um, that, that's a area median income, and so the level of affordability is based on someone's, uh, income and whether or not they're below those thresholds, and I have a table that, um, shows you what the qualifying incomes would be at, you know, for one occupant or a double occupant of a one-bedroom or two-bedroom at each of these different levels, but as you, the, the table on the bottom here shows what the rents, uh, would be, and these are, um, mostly driven by Dane County, we have, you'll see that there's a difference, um, in the sixty percent one-bedrooms, and that's because we have three, we have a stack of three one-bedrooms with a alcove, um, it's an alcove, so it's basically a, a bedroom that doesn't have a window, um, and so those are slightly discounted even from what the Dane County maximum rent at that level would be. So, there you go, those are the rents, and then this is the, um, the max income levels at each of these different, um, price points, so for, to read the chart, just, I'll just look at the first one, but we have four one-bedroom, one-bath at the thirty percent AMI, the gross rent, so that would be inclusive of the utility, um, allowance. To qualify for that unit, a single person would have to make less than twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty dollars per year, or two, two, two people would have to make less than thirty thousand two hundred and forty dollars per year. All right, and then the last section of our presentation is the, um, is the traffic study, there's a, um, four-page, uh, study that was included in your package, uh, I'm just gonna go through a couple of the highlights, and what I wanted to point out here was that, um, just some contextual data, so our proposed development is, is shown just to the left of that, um, yep, right there. And as you can see, a lot of the traffic in this particular area happens at Ma- at the, at the intersection of your downtown, yep, right there, and so because it's a, a two-way, uh, street going north, obviously a lot more of the traffic is there, so you'll see fifty-three hundred cars a day, you know, travel that route. South of there, it's thirteen hundred, uh, vehicles, and going, you know, east and west, you're between forty-eight hundred and, you know, sixty-four hundred. So just some contextual data there. The next table shows, um, the, the consultant looked at, um, two use scenarios and their impacts on the, the neighboring area in terms of daily, uh, traffic, uh, trips that it would produce. The first table is our fifty-seven units as, uh, a senior housing project, and so the weekday total trips was a hundred and eighty, they're estimating that at peak AM, there would be, you know, ten total trips, the peak PM would be fifteen, and Saturday and Sunday would be twenty. They compared that with the, uh, plan that's been approved by, uh, the city, uh, the village, and, um, on that plan, there was also, um, retail, and the assumption was that the housing was market rate, which generates more traffic, and so all of this basically says that the impact of our proposed use is less than what's been approved by the village.
That was the downtown plan, just to clarify.
And then the final, uh, slide, um, is just the conclusion of the, of the study itself, which says that the total number of trips that we're creating in the neighborhood is nominal relative to, um, either what else could be built on the site and in, uh, relationship to the total number of trips that are, uh, generated on Main Street, and it benefits by having an entrance north of Elm Street or on the one-way street.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions in general before they?
Yeah, I guess I'll ask a, a couple. When you talk about peak times, or peak traffic, uh, in reference to Saturdays, there's no context of time, type of day. Do you have a, uh, time in mind, or is it just, those are the max number of trips that you would see on a Saturday?
I'd have to, I can ask the consultant, we can certainly bring that information back to the committee.
I mean, the, you know, weekdays make sense in terms of rush hour times, right, seven to nine, and, you know, probably four to six, uh, but Saturday isn't really defined for me, so I just was curious about that. I like your project, uh, congratulations on the WEDA funding, um, you're, you're filling a gap, and we all are aware that, you know, we need senior housing, so there's a lot of positive things, uh, that I do like about your project. My biggest concern is how the southern portion, the south facade, matches up with the neighboring house, and in our packet, we did not have that context drawing. So thank you for including it, it, that helps a lot, because that was the one thing that was a real stickler for me, is, you know, I would not want to be that neighbor with this towering building. You've done a lot to break up the facade, uh, I think successfully, uh, particularly the third floor where you changed the material, that helps lighten the building. Uh, where it fails for me are these tall, red. Where it fails for me are these tall red facade elements. That's just shooting upright and it's making that building seem tall. So I think I would look at trying to break that gable up, maybe a different material, maybe a different color, something to reduce the feel that this is shooting skyward. Those are the, the main concerns. I, I do like moving the driveway to the north, eliminating a lot of the traffic hassles. So I, I think you've come a long way. I, personally, I think that building could still, it would be nice to look at flipping it one more time and having the southern facade be in the north and having, going away from the street. I don't know if you've thought about that. It kind of echoes your first option in, in your initial approach, where you still had that driveway north of the Elm Street intersection. But I do feel better seeing the context of the neighbor, that drawing.
Thank you.
Hey, John. Where you, one of the flexibilities that you were asking for was for a 15-foot setback. Where, where is that, that you're asking for that flexibility?
The front yard, smaller. I think, I think we're showing the 15-yard, 15-foot in that dash line. And what, we were looking at this, is the, the house to the north is closer than we are to the sidewalk. We're a little, we're matching up closer to the house on the south as far as a setback goes. We have a little bit of flexibility to move in there. We, in talking, the initial pass with the civil engineer, we've kind of hit a sweet spot from a grading standpoint for him. But I, I think what it was is if we drew a diagonal line from the house to the north, to the house to the south, our south corner was pretty close to that line. So right or wrong, we're approximately lined up with the house to the south, with the one to the north a little closer.
So the flexibility is that you want to be further back than 15 feet, not at 15 feet?
Well, we're no closer than 15 feet, is the way I.
Yeah. So just to remind you, through that timeline, the GDP was already approved back in February, March. So at the time, they were kind of, they still had that previous site plan orientation. And we're working on grading and have the survey and all that to do. So I think they wanted to have that flexibility to go as close as 15 feet to the front yard, should they need it. Um, this, this option doesn't.
I wasn't seeing a 15-foot violation or something in there, so I was just kind of like, what?
Right. So the, the red dash line that wraps the property here is the minimum setbacks, at least our understanding of what we got approved.
Yeah, you're fine. I, I think that, I, I agree with Patrick. I think that your site plan, this approach, far more effective than the last get-around. I think it's much more efficient. I think the improvement in loss of asphalt is, is tremendous. It helps with your stormwater, gives you the opportunity to do the solar array on that space. Yeah, for all the right reasons, I think that it's a better site plan. I also think that you've done a nice job of, of using some good quality materials. And I think that the palette is, is totally reasonable and appropriate for this area. I think, again, like Patrick had said, the purpose that you're doing these apartments for is spot-on. It's a need that needs to be filled here, so that's all good and positive. I think that the building just as a whole, I'm not even gonna get into the details yet. I think that it's really unsympathetic to, to its location. I think that it could be, it could go onto any lot in any suburban location in any town. There is really nothing that speaks to this site and this scale and this rhythm of buildings in that area. That's my take. I just, yeah, I, I think this building could go on any lot. I don't think that it's a bad building. I just don't think that there's anything that says that you have looked at eve heights, window heights, anything, rhythm of, of scale of the neighboring buildings in the area. What, what are they? How do they tie together with this? I, and, and that goes on and on. And I think that it also plays into sort of what Patrick was commenting on is, aesthetically, if you look at, for example, the street elevation, there's no real rhythm to it. There's, there's, there's good aesthetic attempts at gables and, and breaking up scales up and down with materials. But there's nothing that really, you've got a gable, a flat, a smaller gable, a double-wide, a quadruple-wide gable, you know, there's just sort of a lot going on. There's nothing that really says this is a nice sort of comfortable rhythm in this neighborhood. I also think that the entry that you had mentioned, it's, it looks totally like an afterthought. It is between two flat little pieces. There is nothing that says that this is a welcoming location for people to come. And then you put this little wonky awning, I'm sorry, that, that's, that's, that was wrong. You put a little awning over it that's just sort of like an afterthought. There's nothing else on the building that has that aesthetic, nothing. I think that the patio area is a great feature. I think that it will be utilized a lot. I think you want to look at how can it match up with the, again, the rhythm of the architecture that you're using. The columns don't seem to match up with what's going on behind it. You've got a gable at the corner or a gable on the ends, but you've got a hip at the corner. You know, think about sort of how, how can you get this thing to look like the neighborhood? How can it be, how can it be more comfortable? You've made really good improvements, and, and I am nitpicking. But that's purely because, you know, it's, it's where I live. And I, I want it to be, we worked hard to get the other apartment in the downtown to do things to make it feel comfortable. We did certain things with the low-income housing on the old church site to make it tie into the neighborhood with pushing it out and putting some porches on. I think we want to try to make that same attempt here. I think that we want to try to, even if the porch is on the first floor, that maybe they, is there something in the architecture to the buildings in that area that you can tie into that set it up? Because right now, it's a three-story building. There's nothing that speaks to the two-story houses in that neighborhood. I'll stop.
Thank you. Anybody else? You folks have any more, any more comments? And again, we'll ask, if anybody from the public wants to speak for a few minutes, we'll have that, but, so if you stick around. So you have some ideas? We're not, we're not overly negative, but I think, you know.
That's helpful.
Yeah, don't, yeah, I didn't mean to.
No, I understand.
He's an architect for the gods. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we had a couple of people raising hands.
Yeah, we'll wait till these gentlemen, they're gonna sit down, then we'll have, anybody that wants to speak, I'd be happy to. I, I'm gonna ask you to hold your comments to three to five minutes max, okay, please? That's what we're gonna allow. Anybody, come on up and just give us your name, please, and make your comments.
Hi, I'm Eileen Bockus. I'm the house to the south. So, you know, I have, I have some concerns. I'm exceedingly grateful that the traffic pattern has been changed. It makes so much more sense to have the entrance and exit on the north side of the building. I know there's been traffic studies. I wonder if there's ever a traffic study about foot traffic. There is non-stop foot traffic on North Main Street. Kids coming home from the middle school, from RCI. People walking their dogs, people pushing strollers. Is there ever any consideration or thought about that?
Just in terms of the safety or counting foot traffic?
Just the impact on traffic going in and out. I know sometimes it's difficult for me to back out of my own driveway because of all of the, the kids, dogs, people walking to the coffee shops and stuff. Just a, just something to throw out. I appreciate the, the changes on the aesthetics of the building. I think it could be better, as has already been said. One real nitpicky little thing on page 16 of the attachment. My name is spelled wrong. I mean.
That's rightly so. Thank you.
Insult to injury guys, really, so.
That'll be corrected, thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Don't you take, just take your time.
I'm Sarah Nellis, live on State Street. So the first I had heard about this was when they put up the survey. I am sure I'm not the only neighbor in the area that would have liked a little bit more forewarning that we're gonna have at least 100 and plus cars extra coming down our streets. My house has almost been hit more than once in the wintertime due to traffic coming, whipping around corners. I'm two houses right off the corner of Main Street. Thank God for snowbanks. Our street, and I know the next street down, we are very busy in the morning with school traffic during the school year. Adding more traffic to our neighborhood is not something that any of us that live on our streets are kind of happy about hearing. So it's a little, you know, we live in a historical neighborhood. We're putting a, we're tearing down historical houses to put in, much needed. Not, you know, we do need the housing. But you're also talking seniors. We don't have a bus system. We don't have a way for them to get to the grocery store unless they drive. Has that been thought about? Putting another apartment downtown in the village versus somewhere closer where they do not have to drive to get to food and other things? Unless we're magically gonna have a new bus system that we can kind of limit some of this traffic that's going on. So I mean, I just want to throw out, for those of us who live in the neighborhood who did not have warning that we lost a house, so now we're losing three to put in a massive apartment complex. And for a historical neighborhood, I mean, I live in a 100-plus-year-old house. I don't really want a big apartment complex next door to it. So I just, you know, want, as somebody who lives in the neighborhood, who has, you know, dogs, cats, kids, I mean, my daughter has now graduated, so I don't have to worry about that. But I still have to back out of my driveway every morning and not worry about getting hit. And it's been a problem, as is. So you're just now adding more to it. So I'm not sure if the traffic things that you guys tested were also for the side streets that people have to go down to get to James, to the main streets to get in and out of town. So that's just kind of my little concern is that that wasn't thought so through. But again, as somebody who owns a historical house, even though mine's not fancy, I'm a little concerned that we're now tearing down historical houses to put in a modern apartment.
All right, thank you very mu, no, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Yeah, I live on Washington Street and nobody seemed to mention anything about the construction traffic.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you for your name because it has to go on the record. I apologize.
Randy Glodowski, I live on Washington Street.
Thank you, thank you.
And my question is, it seems like nobody brought up the construction traffic that's gonna be going on during this whole project. I mean, there's gonna be big equipment going and leaving the site. And it seems to me, you just did all that work on Washington State, Main, Janesville Street. And we already get a lot of traffic from people coming from South Main that'll turn down our street or Elm or State to get to Janesville Street, to get to where they're going. And it's even worse during the school season. I guess what I really want to find out is what happens if some of the streets get damaged because of heavy construction, vehicles, you know, pulling cranes and... Is somebody gonna cover that or are they gonna redo the streets or? Just the question.
And it's a fair question, it's a fair question. You know, and again, these streets are constructed to supposedly be able to handle that type of heavy traffic, heavy, heavy equipment, excuse me. If something like that happens, I, I'm pretty well assured that our Public Works Director will make comment to the violating issue or your violating person or company, and they will have to take care of the problem.
Well, I noticed that on Main Street when they dug that up just a few weeks ago. You know, that, that was basically a new street and now there's just a patch there. It just seems like all that money you guys put into it, and then you're just patching the street?
Okay, I'm gonna ask you, what option do you have at that point?
Well, I don't know what the options are, but I hate to see our streets get.
I appreciate that. And, and again, till we find out what construction equipment's going down there, the, the direction of travel, how they're gonna come into and out of the site. And I'm sure, again, our, our village Public Works Director and, and the other people in the village, our, our Public Works people will review that and try to make sure that we don't destroy or wreck any of our streets we fixed. Again, I don't like seeing a brand-new street dug up. I don't.
Right.
But once in a while it happens. I mean, I, you know, it happens. All we can do is make sure that they put it back the way it was.
And I guess the other thing would be parking for construction workers. Are they gonna park on the street or will they actually have a place?
I suspect, well, there's only so much room on the street.
I mean, because some of those streets are pretty narrow to begin with.
Right, right. But, you know, construction sites usually have accommodations.
Well, I know, but that doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna park there.
If the street has allowed parking, I don't think we can stop anybody from using it. I mean, that's that.
Well, I just know that when I was doing construction work, that a lot of people would park on the street because they didn't want to drive in the mud, you know, or park in the dirt or.
Yes. I, I don't know, I was to answer your question, if, if the parking is allowed on your street, they could park there.
Okay, I just.
Unless, unless, you know, we can't do anything about it.
I would just, yeah, more worried about the construction traffic. Because when they leave that site, they're gonna either have to go down Elm, Main, Washington State, because they're not gonna be able to turn left out of there.
No, they cannot.
Just something to think about.
No, we appreciate, no, and again, we, we're ways from the final getting this thing built, so, okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks for coming, I appreciate it very much. Anybody else? We don't bite. Come on up, yes, sir, come on.
Gentlemen, ladies. My name's Chris Blue. I've been here before. I'm representing myself, but also Levon Ace. And Levon would be here except she's in Triangle Park right now, enjoying the Triangle Park music. So that was much more important for tonight, because Heather and Dave are playing, but that's besides the point. I really like what has happened with, with the reconnoitering of the building. From 160 South Main Street, that's gonna afford us a little bit better and less austere-looking thing sitting out of our front door. I'm, I'm very concerned about our cross-street neighbors and, and how that's gonna be handled with regard to, they're having a traffic lane living right next to them all, all day long. I believe that the same person who owns his property owns that property too, so I'm sure they've probably worked it out with tenants. The, there is also a current concern about how, you know, heavy equipment's gonna be worked with, but that's something that usually takes place after you decide you're actually gonna do it. I, I would just hope that we do a good, careful thought about that. And congratulations on getting WEDA funding, it's not very easy to do that, that's pretty cool. And there is a concern from my standpoint, my mother lives in Sarasota, Florida, in a somewhat gated kind of area of mobile homes. And the, um, the problem that they have is getting around, moving from here to there, their, their mobility. And I'm hoping that at some point, that our, our village will think about the fact that we need to improve that, because right now, we're good at the walkers, we're good at the bicycles, but I'm not sure scooters are gonna handle anything out there. I would really support John's point with regard to how this building looks. I really appreciate the color, coloring that's been done, I really, the palette works really well for me. I really have a problem with the, the towers, I think that they're pretty austere. I like the fact that it looks more set back than the initial look, so I appreciate that. But as I look around at my, my neighborhood, and I see the buildings that are there, the houses that have been there for hundreds, hundred years or more, they're truly historic, each one is worth fighting for because of its history. The, um, the look of them makes them valuable to those that would want a historic-looking house. When Randy sold out of the, the house he was in, the people who came into it bought that house because of the way it looked, Randy Glitch. And I, I think it's important that we realize that the, the look of this building really does need to fit better, I don't think that's a mute or a small point at all, I think that's very important, and we need to put some more thought and, and eyeballs to that, for sure. Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good comments, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, any more comments from the Plan Commission? Gentlemen, you have any other comments? You took it, it sounds like they'd like to have you look at a little bit, and I, I know you will, I know you will. All right, thanks very much, folks, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you again. Item seven B, which is a public hearing and consideration to a recommendation to the Village Board to, uh, on a proposed zoning text amendment to section twenty, section twenty-two storm water management and erosion control of the Village of Oregon municipal code, applicant is the Village of Oregon. Okay, we will have the staff and consultant report.
Lauren, would you mind taking this one, since this was kinda worked on while I was out on leave?
Boy, we lost everybody.
Sure, not a problem. So, there is a brief memo in the packet, and it really is some pretty minor changes, so it, it summarizes them. An issue that we've been looking at for quite a while and finally decided to work on in earnest is our storm water and erosion control code relies heavily on the Dane County Storm Water and Erosion Control Ordinance, and at some point between the time that the original ordinance for the village was approved, and today, all of the references in Dane County's ordinance changed. So, we were referring to clauses that no longer existed, which was causing a lot of confusion with developers, as well as even, I will say for my part, with staff. So, we got into that, and we also decided to tackle a couple of just small issues, references to a combination permit that we do not issue, so we didn't want that in the ordinance such that somebody might think there was one. We did get a comment from a developer about a minimum setback distance from a hundred-year water level that, upon looking into it more closely and looking at surrounding communities, really didn't seem to be very applicable, so we decided to remove that, such that the engineers, looking at each individual project, would have a little bit more discretion to decide what is a safe distance back from a, from a storm water control feature. And then lastly, we kind of tried to bring things into the twenty-first century a little bit, we were still mandating hard copies of submittals, we do virtually everything digitally now, so especially with the number of revisions you go through on a lot of these plans, that's we wanted to make sure that that was spelled out clearly.
Okay, so now we'll open the public hearing, and look for public input, and he's not gonna comment. Okay, so we have no public comments, oh my gosh, we got, I guess we close the public hearing, move on then. So, I, okay, you're cleaning up things that need to be cleaned up in the ordinance, basically?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Plan Commission, discussion?
I just had one question, everything looked fine to me in terms of changes, but I saw the permit duration is eighteen months, and isn't the typical building permit two years?
At least, do you know the answer to that one?
It's two years.
So, what, what stuck out to me is why would it vary, why, why wouldn't it be two years to be the same as a building permit?
That's a very good question, um, that obviously is not one of the clauses that we changed, so probably somebody had put that in there at some point. These permits are not issued in conjunction, well, occasionally they're issued in parallel with building permits, but they're not single and two-family housing erosion control permits like are typically issued with those, so they're kind of on a separate track. Realistically, the way that these things usually go, we almost never use an expiration date, so we track these permits through time, and then we require permittees to provide particular documentation to close them out. So, it's, it's not so much that things expire, it's that we are watching, and Dane County is watching, until somebody deliberately goes and closes the permits.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you, I, I was reading through this, and I wanna make sure that my understanding is different than maybe what was intended. So, on the downstream conveyance portion, a lot of red, uh, item three, B, C, kinda thing. Can you explain that to me? What the strikeout and additional comments and stuff is? And then I'll go into my sort of.
What page in the packet?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I got the printout, I don't know.
I'll get there.
Performance standards.
Standard runoff rate control.
Looks like, oops, page fifty-eight?
Yes, I, I think I know what you're talking about, because I remember going to town in that section. So, there were a couple of areas that I did tweak in there, under three A, one, two, three, four, five, all of those peak runoff rate things, those I simply modified the wording, the way that they were written does not line up with the way that Dane County storms are written, so it wasn't consistent, and it's not really the way that engineers would typically read them, so I just made adjustments to those, they're the same storms, the same standards, they're just written identically to how it's written in the Dane County ordinance, so that folks are not getting confused as they look back and forth between the two. I also did remove the explicit references to depth, because those change, as storms evolve and as NOAA updates the magnitude of storms, a one-hundred-year event, it's six-point-six-six inches over twenty-four hours now, it may go to something greater, probably something like seven to eight inches, most likely, given what we've been seeing, and given how long it was since the last ordinance update to today, I wanted to make sure that this wasn't referencing something that, if that changes and it falls off our radar, we aren't putting out conflicting information, so that someone's wondering, well, what standard do I have to meet? Moving along down to item B, which I'm guessing is the one that you're really wondering about, that is essentially saying that any development project can't negatively impact downstream facilities, so specifically downstream conveyance facilities. When I read this, going through this process, I knew what they were trying to get at, but as an engineer, I did not understand how they were getting there with the text as it was written. So, this was my attempt to try to clarify what we were going for, which is that someone has to look at what the downstream facilities, storm sewer channels can take, and they have to demonstrate that they are not negatively impacting that, so this was me trying to clean that up.
So, if, oh, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So, if I'm coming into the village and I've got a person that wants to build a small manufacturing office, health clinic, whatever, and I have created my site, I've done all of the storm water management for that, I have, you know, sealed it with a kiss, whatever, I turn it over to the village and you say, yeah, that's great, but there's something downstream that is failing because of your project, do you send this client then a bill for improving that, or what's this, what does this mean? You know, that's what I'm talking about, that conveyance downstream.
Sure.
Where are we going?
Yeah, so this is a pretty standard requirement. Where we would typically address this is at the beginning, at the planning stage of things, so this wouldn't be something that allows the village to go back to a developer who's washed their hands of this three years down the line and say, you broke my pond, shoot, we need financial compensation for this. This is really saying, developer, you are coming to us, you are proposing this storm water system, you are proposing to put X volume of water into this existing pond, you have to model that, and you have to show that you're not exceeding the capacity of that pond, that you're not making the way that this pond functions materially worse in a way that we can model. Now, I will say that you will almost never see a design storm in the real world, and so we will never be able to model exactly how any facility will perform in any particular event, but this essentially says that a developer, and even in some cases, the village, when we're doing projects, and especially as we move into a world where we're more regulated on the storm water side, we can't just be putting in a facility that works just for our particular area, just for our particular purposes, we need to be looking at the broader storm sewer system, so that we know that we're not, we've done everything in our power to prevent negative impacts to downstream folks.
But answering my question, though, does this mean that you can come back to the developer and say that you need to improve my storm water downstream?
If I might.
Yeah?
If I, just for my clarification?
Yeah.
What, what you're saying is, John's client, forgive me, John.
No, you're good.
Your client said wants to build a building, and as part of his storm water plan is to drain into an existing storm water facility, and then you're going to ask John's civil engineer to model that.
Correct.
To make sure that what they're planning on doing, what they're planning on adding to that existing pond is exceeds its capacity.
Does not, does not exceed it.
Does not exceed it, yes, correct, yep.
Is that, is that what it is?
That's exactly right.
That's who I hear.
I get that, but what if, because in these ever-changing storm water things that you've mentioned, we're increasing that down, we're decreasing that downstream viability of an existing pond that may have been there for years, and now all of a sudden, we're in violation of the capacity of that downhill downstream pond, and I've got my client who may have, you know, and look, if, take your hat off from the city's perspective and put it on from the developer's perspective, I've got this small company, this is like their life's dream, they may have gone to even things as complicated as an SBA loan, which, you know, once they've got the purse strings, they don't open them back up again, so do I have to improve that downstream if I am violating the capacity? Is that what you're saying?
The way that this is written, yes, and actually, we had a recent, we had a recent example of this, so the Bodie How development, they went in and did some improvements to a public pond because of some of what they needed as far as, I'm sorry, that's incorrect, that one was because they actually owned the pond. That said, um, yes, that is what this is saying essentially, is that you cannot, as a developer, make it such that a pond comes out of compliance, and while I can't at the moment think of an example here in Oregon, this is something that I have seen at other municipalities, that occasionally a developer will put funding towards upgrading a downstream public facility. That is something that can be negotiated in these cases, um, I've seen it dealt with a number of ways, but I think you're interpreting the ordinance correctly.
And, and I'll just say it, I struggle with this mightily, because it's sort of like if this same project that I was talking about, ten years down the road, the building that they thought that they had put in enough capacity for expansion, they don't have it, now I need to expand, they can't go to the village and say, I need to have this paid for by you, because I need to expand my business. It's sort of what the village is saying with the pond, the pond isn't big enough to handle something, so I'm gonna expand it and you're paying for it, not the village. It seems like that's, and I understand, it's tough from the village's perspective when I put their hat on, um, you know, the economies are difficult right now, and funding is difficult, but I struggle having to put that burden on for a crystal ball onto a developer who, this may be their life, life's.
Joy. But getting back to very basics in the village, we've always been of the opinion that when you make a development, even when you improve a lot, you can't improve a lot in such a way that you put more flow off your lot onto an adjacent lot.
You can't do it.
Same thing.
That's not what this says.
That's what, to me, that's what it's saying, isn't it?
Well, it, it says in here that we have to go to, you know, pre-development runoff levels, so we're retaining water, but it goes on further to say that we have to analyze that water all the way out of the village, so if I'm building out here on the west side, we all know that everything flows through downtown.
If you're not, okay.
And out the east side, so do we have to analyze that water until it leaves the village limits on the east side, and how does, I mean, that, that's a.
I'm, I'm looking more simplistic than that, I'm looking more simplistic than that in that, the development on your lot, whatever that lot was putting off prior to development, you can still do that, but nothing beyond that.
They're saying.
Is that what you're saying, Lauren? Is that essentially kind of, or not?
It's a little bit in the middle there, so it's, yes, what you're saying is our, it's actually, um, we have an over detention ordinance, so it is covered in this, and it is a part of that, it's that section we talked about at the very beginning of this, this part of the discussion, where you have to match the hundred-year peak flow post-development to the ten-year, that's very site-specific. This is written to protect the actual storm water infrastructure itself, so this would be if you were discharging, the post office is a good example, the post office is discharging to their own treatment and detention facilities that then go into a village facility. The post office had to prove that when they discharged to that downstream pond there, that they didn't negatively impact that facility, and they did so by detaining on-site, so they were able to show that. They weren't able to just say, well, we're going straight into this pond, it, we're treating the water, it's fine, so that's, that's what this means, it doesn't mean you have to model the entirety of Badfish Creek, it's a good question, but that's not what this is saying, it's essentially saying, we don't want our pond not working the way that we intended it to work, because that could lead to flooding, and as we get bigger and we move into a time when we have to start tracking the amount of contaminants that are in our system and leaving our system, that could actually financially negatively impact the village too.
I think part of, part of my heartburn with all that is you're asking each individual lot owner, developer. I think part of, part of my heartburn with all that is you're asking each individual lot owner, developer, you know, owner to model something potentially that, um, looking back more than a dozen years ago, when EarthTech was the village's engineer, we put the, the new seventy-two-inch culvert through town, we put the ponds out here, they sold us on a, a very new modeling program that was supposed to track that and, and, and I don't know what the status of that program and software, you know, piece of, uh, piece of technology is, but is every time somebody's gonna do something, they have to, you know, model those ponds and, and redo the data, or is that something that's kept track of, and, and we know what the capacity of that is, and they just have to say, "Oh, the capacity is this, and we're only putting in this," and simple math, or do they have to go out there and shoot levels in those ponds and, you know, redesign them more or less each, each and every time? That seems like a very, very high bar for each individual project to have to, to go through over and over again.
It depends on how it's planned. So, there are instances in the village where somebody has planned out a three-building, um, facility, shall we say, but they only have the funding to do the one building now, and maybe they wanna do the second and the third down the line. But they go ahead, they make assumptions based on that three-building facility, and they size a pond. I've seen that go up even to a neighborhood level. We have a particular neighborhood in town that did all of their design for construction that is still occurring today in two thousand and four. In those cases, provided that the village is comfortable and accepts that modeling, we don't retroactively punish somebody for not building all of their buildings together. If you've submitted a stormwater plan for your whole development and the village has accepted it, even if these standards change, we have not historically, nor is this written to allow us the ability to go back and say, "Well, no, 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 Noah, your bad luck, Noah gave you an extra inch of rainfall, you have to redo that." And this is really the benefit of planning ahead, planning out how your whole site is going to go, even if you're not able to do it right away, having that foresight to think that far into the future. We do have developers that really just, "I just wanna think about this, I just wanna think about this." Sometimes that's possible, but this is the danger, is that these standards can change. So, we would never ask somebody, we would, under this ordinance, we don't have the ability, nor do we have the inclination to tell somebody, something that's already been approved is unapproved now and you have to redo it. However, this is written in a way that is trying to protect what we have built, knowing that the other side of the coin here is that the village has to account for these changes. The village needs to recognize that even if a pond, a regional pond that is owned by the village, was designed for a hundred-year event in two thousand and four, we still have to model it with whatever the current rainfall is. And once we get into a time period where we have to pay per pound of phosphorus, we're still gonna have to pay for all the phosphorus we're discharging. So, you know, the DNR is not going to let us take credit based on two thousand and four calculations, and this is trying to kind of walk that line as best we can.
I think you just got it more confused.
Sorry.
I, 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 but I understand what you're saying, because I'm an engineer, but, um...
No, I understand what you're saying too. I, I just think that this is putting the burden in a place where it doesn't belong, in my opinion.
But I don't think it is, John. I really don't, because I think, as Lauren's saying, is because once you as the, as the designer and the owner and, and the project and, and whatever have, have satisfied the requirements of stormwater detention, whatever way you do it on your property, and you're not going to discharge any more downstream to whatever pond or whatever we have, and you can show that, you've satisfied that results.
But, the difference is that when you do your onsite detention and stormwater, there's an overflow. That overflow does go into the system, that's what you're talking about.
Well, the overflow, again, that's if you have beyond a hundred-year flood.
No.
That's, well, occasionally, you will see an overflow with a hundred-year flood, but we do require developers to account for that.
Right.
Yes.
So I, where I'm, where I'm going with this again is that, no, it, I don't think that they're looking at penalizing somebody down the road. I don't think that that's in this ordinance. I don't believe the way you've, you described it and the way I understand it would be that way. It, it just doesn't make sense that it would be that way.
How do you mean penalize someone down the road?
Well, in other words, what John's saying is, you know, uh, ten years down the road, all of a sudden, "Well, you've done this to our pond, now we're gonna come back."
Correct.
Nope.
You've proven, you've proven, back when you did your development,
Yeah.
that, uh, no, our calculations and your engineer, village engineer, has approved your calculations, and they say that we're not gonna have any more flow, then, but something happened, okay. Okay, something happened.
Correct.
That area got two inches more rain than two blocks away, which can happen.
Yep, yes, it can.
But I'm not talking about ten years down the road. I'm talking about when, when I come in with my development, and I have shown that my onsite detention, and this is what I wanna make sure, my onsite detention, my stormwater has been approved by Dane County, by everybody. That I submit this package to the village, and the village comes back and says, "Yep, you've done it, it's right, but," and it's the "but" that I'm talking about, is that, is that the downstream capacity has been violated because of my overflow or because of whatever else. I've already met the ordinance, according to Dane County, according to what we have in our zoning. I've met it. I don't want to have somebody come back and say, "Now I need you to pay for something downstream."
Looking at that all, all at the same time though, John, like as you're designing what you're onsite, what you're doing, you're also looking downstream. So it's not like you're coming back to something.
Correct.
It's, it's your onsite plan all at the same time.
When you're saying down, yes, but you, again, you're not, you don't have to accommodate for what the downstream situation is, as long as you do not send any more down than what you're seeing you're gonna put down there.
That's correct.
Let me see if I can, in a, in a planner's mind, reiterate what I'm hearing and, and maybe tell me if this is correct. So, let's say it's a doctor's office, medical office, somebody's trying to build here. They design it, submit all the plans, the ordinance requires that they have to have the capacity to have a hundred-year, um, stormwater pond event held on their property. Maybe because of the site constraints or the groundwater table, or some other feature of the property, that's not possible. And so, when there's a hundred-year event, they're going to have that overflow we can expect and model and say, "It's gonna go to this regional pond down the hill, whatever." That's what we can model and say, "You need to prove that there's capacity in this pond." Typically, most people are able to have that hundred-year stormwater pond on their site, and so, this wouldn't apply, because sometimes we get the thousand-year flood, and we're not gonna require people to have that capacity on their property. We know that there's gonna be flooding, we know that probably our, our ponds might overflow too, they might not be designed for that, but that's just the rest of those large events. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's all correct.
So, when all the plans are submitted, the engineers for the, the developer are gonna tell us, "We're meeting this, you know, all the requirements of the code, we have everything contained onsite, or we don't, and we believe that everything's gonna go to, you know, this village-owned pond here." And that's where our engineers would work with them to verify the capacity at the plan review stage.
The only time I've ever, for what it's worth, seen this come up even a little bit, is we had a development, um, that we're currently working with right now, that was near, but not in that neighborhood I mentioned that was kind of master-planned back in the early two thousands. And they said, "Well, we're close, can we just discharge to this regional pond that is right next to us?" And our response was, "No, because you weren't in that original master plan." You would've been potentially negatively impacting that pond. Now, it's, it's up to that developer, had they chosen to go this route, they could've gone out and surveyed and said, "No, we really wouldn't." Using our modeling, this is the best course, but they chose not to do this. What they were really trying to do was piggyback off something that somebody else had already designed way back in the day, that didn't incorporate them and trying to use that. And that's what we're trying to prevent, is somebody not dealing with their own stormwater onsite, and just putting it into our system, be it a greenway, be it a pond, and trying to take credit for it that way. That's not what this ordinance is intended to allow them to do.
Do you still have?
I, I...
Questions?
They're not, you're not gonna convince these guys, but...
No, I still, I still think that this, I understand what you're saying. I think this gives the village the opportunity to charge somebody, and I think that's wrong.
I don't see that. I don't see that.
That's, that's not the way it's intended to work. I will also just kind of reiterate, um, this was already in different words in this ordinance, so this has been in the ordinance, this is not a new clause to it. It was just kind of rephrased, so...
And the only way the village would really be charging anybody would be if they cannot provide, meet the stormwater requirements on their site, and there's improvements that are gonna be needed for a regional pond. And that would be basically the stormwater solution to meet the requirements for the project.
Correct, yep.
So they either have to do it on their site, or...
So if I meet the requirements of the runoff from my site, pre-development, I meet that, I don't have to model that water further downstream.
Correct.
That, that's where the heartburn is for me. I'm, I'm not denying the water needs to flow downhill. I'm not denying that at some point, we send too much water from the west to the east, and there's, there's a bottleneck.
There'd be no reason why you shouldn't.
I don't wanna ignore that. I just don't wanna have each and every time, somebody has to model that water all the way out of town, and it just seems redundant and expensive for people to do that.
So, um, also, for what it's worth, and this is probably further than you guys wanna go with it, but the way that I've seen this really trip up communities is honestly on the community's side. So, neighbors have said, "Well, this pond by my house floods, it's flooding my house, can't you just knock down the weir height?" And communities have said, "Well, sure, that sounds like a great idea," and looked at their conveyance system and gone, "Oh, shoot, we're gonna flood the neighbors out if we let that happen." So, like I said, I, I have almost never seen this applied to a private development, um, certainly not past the asking questions stage, but this is, to some extent, kind of trying to codify so that we don't do that inadvertently as well.
Boy, that's pretty simple, beginning, didn't it? All right, so at this point, we closed up public hearing, we had the discussion, are we comfortable with making a recommendation to the village board?
I'll, I'll make the motion, because I know John's not gonna make it. Uh, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance twenty-five oh six, amending chapter twenty-two to the village of Code ordinances relating to stormwater management and erosion control.
Thank you, and Phil made the second. We have motion, we have a second, if any more discussion, John?
Nope, nope, I'm good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Good discussion, and it was important for everybody to know that, and Scott, I think you wanted to, I know what you were saying, but I believe, believe from the beginning that there was not anything beyond your development as far as your responsibility. Thank you, it's clarified, we're good. Thank you very much. Item seven C, review and possible recommendation to village board for the conserva- conservation parks master plan. I can bring some glasses next time. Okay, yeah, there's some here.
We'll keep a basket on there.
Well, then we're gonna leave them there. No, they are now, they're gonna stay here.
Need to double them up?
So, this was Elise.
Yep, ready? Okay, so I'll do the, the Reader's Digest version of this, I'm happy to go into as much or little detail as you like, since I know we're getting close to an hour and a half here. Um, so I'm not sure if you all have been aware, tracking any of the park board, um, agendas and a couple of the village board as well, but, um, we had the opportunity this past school year to work with a really talented UW-Madison landscape architecture student, um, named Morgan Heck. Um, her senior capstone project, uh, we submitted, um, to the department. They, they worked with different communities on, um, their proposals for, for capstone project for these senior students, and so we submitted proposal last summer, and ours was chosen by Morgan, so, uh, we had the opportunity to work with her. She's pretty local, she's from Sun Prairie. Um, she's since graduated and works out of the area, so, um, trying to limit the number of times we, we drag her back to Oregon, but, um, she did a really great job, um, kind of presenting this project and, um, engaging the park board along the way. We did a, um, community survey, which hopefully some of you participated in. Uh, we got probably sixty to seventy responses, a lot of detailed responses, um, from folks about the use of the parks, and, and just back up, this is the conservation parks master plan, is the, the name of the project. So, it incorporated six parks, um, kind of the big block between Alpine, North Bar Oak, Jefferson, and Netherwood. So, Keller Alpine Meadows, Dega, Demagio, Florida Avenue, West Side Park, and Lerner, of course, last but not least. Um, so, it was kind of an attempt, um, obviously, there's been a lot of different, a lot of history in these areas, a lot of different uses over time, um, an attempt to kind of tie these parks together, um, both kind of from a marketing perspective, but also just accessibility, um, increased visibility and access to the parks, and then also looking at kind of management of the parks as well as, um, amenities that might want to be living in these parks in the future. So, um, she spent a ton of time on this project, I think it was the equivalent of at least twenty hours a week or something. Um, Lauren and I got a chance to work with her, we were out on site with, um, the Rotary Group, um, that's been involved in Lerner Park in a long time, uh, reached out to different stakeholders, the Nature Alliance, um, library, quite a few, uh, school, the school district, um, quite a few of the preschools, um, and decers that use the parks, and kind of asked them, "How do they use the spaces, what would they like to see in the future?" Um, and all of that was incorporated into the plan that was in your packet. So there was a, she did a presentation at the park board meeting in June. Um, this will actually be on their packet next week too, because, um, they, they just kind of focused, they just were, kind of left at a discussion level, there was no motion recommendation to the village board, but because, um, we're hoping to use this as kind of a master plan, a planning document of the village, this needs to come through both park board and planning commission before it can get to the village board. And ultimately, there are projects in here that she's recommending, um, that Lauren and I have put in the CAP for the parks. So, um, we can highlight some of those, but, um, in order for those projects to actually get into the CAP, they need to be backed up by a plan. Um, this is more detailed than our corporate comprehensive park outdoor recreation plan, our park plan, um, that we did two years ago. So, um, that didn't get into this level of detail for these park areas, but, um, there's Morgan. She was a really great presenter, um, and we were really impressed with how she worked with the community and, and did a good speaking. So, um, she went through a lot of the project background, obviously, this was farmland over time, um, became, you know, nature took over, um, she had a lot of precedent, um, studies of different kind of regional, national, international parks that are, um, similar landscape, and looked at, um, boardwalks, there's some floodable parks, I think this one was in Finland. Um, she kind of looked at how that community has embraced the water here, so you can see, you know, wet and dry, how the, the park, um, infrastructure is still usable. Um, and I wanna just get to the, she did, yeah, a lot of analysis on the plants, on the topography, soils. This was, again, kind of based on what she found, as well as some of the, the survey data, but, um, different opportunities on the sites, as well as constraints, um, you know, certain parts of the parks are, are less accessible, they are, um, wet more often, so kind of identifying areas that maybe don't want themselves as well to kind of human use, and letting those just be natural, maybe having opportunities for viewing platforms and things into those areas, but not trying to force our way into areas that just wanna be wet. Um, trying to increase visibility to the parks, like I said, um, using the opportunities that we have with, like, the library, to have that as a, um, a starting point, um, for folks to have, you know, restrooms and water gathering place for people to see the park in different seasons. Um, obviously, kind of highlighting some of the... Um, obviously kind of highlighting some of the different issues with, with water moving through here. So the main, um. She did a couple of different, um, this is on a couple of different diagrams and stuff, but, um. One of the interventions she was suggesting was, and there's kind of a, um. A key here, different paving types. So whether it's boardwalks, which are in brown, red is proposed paved, uh, additional paved pathways. These are existing unpaved pathways and the green and then in the black is what's existing right now is paved. But, um, trying to provide that kind of east-west connection that has existed sometimes in the past between Lerner, um, and Keller Alpine. Lerner is such an awesome resource for our community. So few people know, you know, it's funny when we took her to Lerner for the first time. She said, if I was coming to this on my own, the, the Bar Oak entrance, there's no way I would stop here in this industrial park. You know, on my own one, just kind of feeling safe, but you know, and maybe not knowing the area, but to just, am I, is, am I in the right place? This doesn't seem right that I'm, I'm next to all these industrial locations. So, um, another thing that she suggested was a, um, looking into the reuse of the Florida Avenue land. Um, putting in a small parking area and having that function as a trailhead, um, perhaps is kind of a, a new primary trailhead for Lerner Park. Um, reconstructing the bridge that's there still, um, and kind of industrial repair. Uh, having a nature play area, and she has details for all of this for kind of a, a natural, um, playground. Um, with some picnic tables and things like that too, but lots of areas for kids to climb around and explore. Um, and then, yeah, just kind of focusing on boardwalk areas and minimal locate, you know, kind of the shortest distance possible with boardwalk is very expensive. Um, but kind of in saving it for those areas that's really needed. Due to the soils and the water there, a couple of different burning towers, you know, possible picnic areas. Um, you know, potential for, you know, bathrooms was something that was mentioned quite a bit, having, wanting to have, um, also potentially a pavilion. There were certainly plenty of people who also said, we don't want to see any more construction or any kind of more buildings in, um, the park. But I would say the majority wanted to see, um, you know, kind of smaller facilities that would fit in with the landscape and, and add to the accessibility of the park. So, um. I can go into more, more detail. She's got, you know, some designs sketched out. A lot of this was a requirement of her class. It was great because she had a weekly class. And so that professor's had a ton of different checkpoints along the way. So we got to see her progress kind of month to month as, um, she had to turn in different. You know, versions of the plan and, and get into planting and, um. Different design requirements that she had to do. But I guess I'll just stop there and ask if there are any questions, if you'd like us to go into more detail.
Put a lot of work in.
A ton of work, yeah.
Was this, uh, you said she's a, a, a landscape architect student. Is this for like an advanced degree or is this like for?
So this was a senior capstone project. So kind of a thesis for an undergrad, uh, landscape architecture. She was in like the professional track. So, um, yeah, it actually, a couple of our, um, developer, um, some developers that work in the area are graduates of this program as well, UW. And before we applied, I asked them, you know, what projects they worked on, how much time they spent on it. And most of them said they spent more than twenty hours a week on these projects. So, um, and we didn't pay anything for this project. This is amazing. Um, obviously if we wanted to take some of these further, we'll need to have. A landscape architect or an engineer actually, or an architect do the design of, you know, pavilion or whatever it might be. But, um, other than, you know, offering to reimburse her for, for printing and gas and things like that, which she never requested. Um, this was a, a learning opportunity for her and, uh, a really great deal for the village. And it was a really positive experience on our end.
I should thank her very much.
I've seen a number of these over the years and this one was hands down like four times as detailed as any before.
It's an amazing document.
I, I thought this, I'm sorry she's not here because I, I actually got a page of notes with questions and comments for her. But I thought this is equally as good as many of the professional studies that we've paid ten thousand or more for. So, um, yeah, kudos to her. Um, in the interest of time, I won't go through these. But, um, I think she put her, put the finger right on the problem, which is that the lack of accessible connected, uh, spaces decreases recreational opportunities. And I've often thought of Lerner Park as a dead end alley. And the only thing I go out there for is to participate in workdays to help burning and stuff. And I kind of kick myself because it is a beautiful place, but because it's not connected through, and she did that. She, she established a connection. Um, and, and so, uh, I think this will be really valuable. Um, one of the things that I didn't see or that occurred to me when I looked at the Florida Avenue parking is I thought of bus drop off. She didn't really incorporate bus drop off. And I know that they do things with the eighth grade. And I, I don't know if there's other school class levels that go out there, but that would be something that if these plans take root, should be considered. And, and I think they'll look at things, uh, more in depth. Um. And then, um, one of the things that occurred to me looking at where she has the Highlands and Netherwood Park, her capstone site, J.C. and Bergamot. Is a potential opportunity for another student in the future to look at how we can make, establish those connections. So just plant that seed, you know, if we have opportunity to get a, a student to look at, uh, what we can do.
Yeah. Our, um, also in the CIP is a, uh, another plan that, um, actually Lauren had a big hand in helping me apply for a couple of years ago. We still have a few years to spend the money, but a bike and pedestrian plan. It's a, um, we got funded eighty-twenty split. So the federal funds would cover eighty percent of the plan. Um, the hope is once I got back from family leave to write that RFP probably this fall and get that work started. But that would be a big, um, component of that is connecting our parks and having a better east-west connection through, um, as well as, you know, looking at. Our plans for the redesign of Jefferson Street and, um, when that gets built in hopefully twenty-twenty-eight. Improved bike and pedestrian facilities to, to kind of link people, you know, moving back and forth, um, along this corridor on bikes or on foot.
So, we need a recommendation to the village board.
I would like to make that recommendation because I was very excited about, I didn't get to look at it till today and I spent a couple of hours reading through it. So, um, I, whatever the recommendation needs to say to.
The whole thing here because it's appropriate. Motion to recommend to approval of Morgan Hanks, Oregon Conservation Parks. Final capstone report as the West Side Conservation Parks Master Plan to the village board.
Thank you. So moved.
Give a second.
I'll second.
Give a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I think again somehow, I don't know what the village has done to, uh, acknowledge her efforts. But it's, I, I would love to see it again, just say the plan commission really was impressed by the report.
Pass that forward. Thank you.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
She'll at least get a village lanyard and stick.
Key, key to the village. All right, moving on. Seven D, discuss possible upcoming zoning text amendments. At least you're out again.
I'm just going to go to the last page of the packet and go back two pages. So, um, again, we can, um, we can revisit this at a future meeting. I just kind of wanted to get this in front of you. So it's been a long journey, but we wrapped up what I thought was the low hanging fruit of the zoning text amendments, which was a lot of the stuff we, we checked off last summer. But, um, fences, um, there was paved yard setbacks. So then obviously, um, the chicken and beekeeping and, um, the concealed fasteners, which we, we went down, um, in detail. In detail and, uh, a lot was learned by all. So, um, now three years later, we're ready to move on to, um. Other, other opportunities to, to look at our zoning code, um, which is now almost twenty years old. So, um, I took some of this from a memo that I did, I think in twenty-twenty-two or three. Um, which was here are some midterm changes that require some kind of policy decisions and discussions. Um, there was a section that we wanted to, um, these section three kind of long-term changes. We wanted to have our comp plan in place, which now we've had in place since December of twenty-three. Um, but kind of aligning the code a little bit better with the comp plan. Um, and then other, um, opportunities that we've talked about since then have kind of put to the side. Our, um, we have a gateway overlay district that's kind of described and that's our, our gateway main corridors, North Main Street, Janesville Street, Jefferson Street. Coming into the village, um, it describes a little bit, you know, we want to have pedestrian oriented development. We want to have high quality building materials. But those areas are actually not mapped. We don't really talk about which streets and also how far back. So is it just development that faces that? Is it something that's visible from those streets? Um, are we going to, uh, limit that to only commercial and multifamily development? Are we going to have those same requirements for single, two-family or for townhomes? So, um, there's some work we need to do to kind of, um, flesh that on the code if that's something we want to focus on next. Obviously we can do all of this in time. It's just a matter of what would you like to focus on next? And then the last thing was kind of, um. Codifying some of the design guidelines in the downtown master plan. So if you remember kind of towards the end of the downtown master plan, um, the architects spent some time, their last presentation, um, going through some additions they did. Where it was talking about how we want to, you know, best practices for matching, you know, windows or what do we want to see for signage and materials and things like that? It's just in that plan. They're just suggestions. Um, if we want to actually put that into, um, obviously we have some language in there for the historic district. But I think we need to either expand the historic district or, um, the downtown design overlay. It's called, excuse me, or, um, or, and/or get into more specifics about what do we want to actually see? For example, um, the MSP senior housing development we were just talking about, if there were some more requirements, guidelines, maybe some diagrams in the code. That we could point to and say, if you're going to do something within this area near downtown, this is what we want to see new, whatever. Multifamily or mixed use or commercial looking like, here's some examples, here's some roof types, build, you know, building materials, that kind of thing. Um, the, the one other element in this upper section I wanted to note that I've gotten a lot of questions about is ADUs, accessory dwelling units. In our code, there actually is already a section called, um, accessory residential units, ARUs, pretty much the same thing, also known as granny flats. Tiny homes, backyard cottages, whole bunch of different names, kind of all the same thing. Right now, all we allow is attached in family suites. So like a, a mother-in-law type suite where it might have a separate entrance, but it's on the same address. It's on the same meter, um, it's still connected to the home on the inside. Um, we don't allow detached units except for in, I think it's SR six, kind of a condo type unit. We don't have any developments that have really done that with like a apartment over garage or something like that. So, um, I have got a lot of questions really since COVID about people who live in kind of multi-generational households. They have a lot of land on their property or maybe they have a large garage. They'd like to have an apartment above the garage. Um, they have an adult child living on site or maybe parents they'd like to keep an eye on and trying to kind of have those. Expanded families on the same property or they're looking for rental income opportunities and trying to find a way to. Do that within their neighborhood without kind of, you know, changing the, the feel of the neighborhood. So, um, I know that's kind of a hot issue right now. The, the good thing is a lot of, this has been really. Discussed in detail in a lot of different communities for the last ten to fifteen years. And so there's a ton of examples from the nation. We can say, this is what this community did. This didn't go well. This is, um, you know. We don't have to totally reinvent the wheel. And I was talking to Van De Waal a little bit about this too. There's actually quite a few of the communities they work with are looking into this right now. And some have taken different approaches. Shorewood Hills, for example. It's kind of makes sense because they're so close to UW Madison campus, but they going into a ton of details. So we just did like an eighteen-page pro and con memo for them and happy to share that with you all. Um, there are other communities, I think maybe it was Cross Plains that are, are staying really hands off and saying it's allowed everywhere. But there's, you know, single and two-family residential and just kind of treating these as accessory, um, buildings. And, and being a lot more hands off in, um, in where these are allowed. There's a lot of discussion about, do you allow? Do, do owners have to live on site, you know, either in a smaller unit or in the main house? Um, what types of properties, you know, what size properties would this allow, that kind of thing? So just wanted to highlight that is that's a question that I get asked a lot and I kind of let people know something we're getting to eventually in the planning commission. And we need to talk about and, um, amend the code to expand that. But, um, that's just been on hold as we work through a lot of these other text amendments. So I don't know if you want to discuss and decide on something now, or if you want to sit with us a little while, I can definitely put on, um, the August meeting to revisit.
Make it September.
September.
I will be here.
It is the second week of August. Does that change?
Now, I'm going to be here. It's, I, I'm on vacation the first week, but I'll be here the second week.
Okay. Cause we moved the meeting to the second week of August.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Elise.
I mean, for me, I think that we, we spent the money to do a downtown study. Um, I think that, and we, we took the time to clearly define some of the corridors and important areas of the village. I think that would be important to get into our laps quickly.
The gateway overlay and the downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're probably right.
And then, and then I, I fully understand what you're saying about, um, getting asked about the grandmother suites and all that kind of stuff. Um, but I think that just purely because of. Where the activity is in development and we have already had these studies done, that's, that would be the priority for me.
Honestly, I see those being a little bit. I thought it would be quick, the last one, but I see those being a little bit less open-ended maybe than the accessory dwelling unit discussion. That can probably, we will go down some rabbit holes with that one.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments?
I wrote down whatever is most pressing. I mean, I, I had ADUs and mixed use permitted and commercial is my top two. Um, but I'm fine talking about downtown. I'm fine talking about the gateway corridor. So, I mean, I kind of feel like leave it to what you think is the most important need.
Okay.
Well, you're back, so now you can do that. All right, thank you. Thank you. Uh, moving on then to, uh, director of community development projects. Lauren, what have you, we've got, I see we got a pump house that's getting some work done on, on Netherwood and.
Yes. So we, you are very correct. Uh, that is well three. And that one is moving right along. That's our rehabilitation of our oldest well there on Netherwood and Hillcrest. And, um, right on schedule, some may have noticed that a generator was delivered out there. Uh, it is. You'll notice it. It is a bright mint green, which is not the color we wanted for it. So.
The normal size of the, the normal color, the ones that you see though.
Unfortunately, yes. So we are looking into possibilities as far as painting that to make it a little less visually something.
Are you just adding like, it looks like you're just adding chemical rooms? Is that what you're doing?
That's correct. Yeah. The chemical rooms and the generator are going to be the most obvious.
That's in my old days of construction. Yeah. I just looked at, all those are just chlorine rooms and stuff. Yeah.
Yep, that's exactly right. Chlorine fluoride. So, um, well, number two is well six. That is the one up in the Highlands and Netherwood. That is the pump house that is being built from scratch this year. They are, that one is getting a later start than intended, but they are mobilizing now. So they should start excavating next week is their current schedule. They do have some equipment up there as well as some erosion control. So finally getting the ball rolling on that one. Um, the wastewater treatment plant is under construction. That is going actually fairly well and according to plan. They've run into some issues with soils and groundwater, not that surprising in that area. So they're managing it actually quite well. They were originally intending to focus on the, uh, new intake structure and pump station. Because of how slow that dewatering is going, they've actually mobilized over at the, um, closer to the south side along the creek. And are working on the UV structure as well. So they're just adjusting the schedule as needed to try to stay on, on track and, uh, and seem to be going pretty well. Oak Street is going. It's been a challenging project. Um, a lot of the same soil issues as have been seen at the wastewater treatment plant. So the contractor is working through it, um, as best they can. Schedule continues to be something that we're just kind of staying on top of and reevaluating, knowing we have certain milestones. Schedule continues to be something that we're just kind of staying on top of and reevaluating, knowing we have certain milestones we have to, have to hit. So kind of a, a living project, and we're keeping a very close eye on that one, but it is moving ahead, and we are getting infrastructure into the ground. The three projects on the private development side that are going this year are Autumn Ridge Phase Three B. The erosion control permit for that, which was the last piece, was issued today, so I believe they're starting next week to start moving dirt around. We also have Greenview Preserve Phase Three, that's currently in review with the DNR. But they are intending to do that work this summer and into this fall. And then we have the remainder of Highlands and Netherwood Phase Four, which is ongoing. That's a couple of lots on Peterson there between the end point that they have right before the well site, towards that well site. And then Highlands and Netherwood Phase Five is still on track to go this year as well, and that will finish that development up. So they are also in review, they're a little bit ahead of the Greenview Preserve project, so that we anticipate will start yet this summer, so.
Good, thank you, thank you. Okay, meeting dates, Elise alluded to that, the August, well, the August date is gonna be August fourteenth. So that'd be a week late, and then the September one, September fourth, and I will not be, I'll be out of the country. Anything else? We have plans, planning staff meeting agenda, you'll notice on your, in your documents. Nothing for future meetings at this point, do we have a motion to adjourn? You have a second?
Second.
Attaboy, second, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, everybody, good meeting. Yeah, I'm sorry, Peggy, you gotta, come on, girl, you gotta go. Yeah, oh, those are two points, you're okay.
And all I really wanted was a happy, healthy.